Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock, so we start with our pledge. And Commissioner Davis, you'll do the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings you have given us. We ask that you watch over us tonight as a commission. Let us make the right decisions that further the cause here in Beverdame. We ask that you watch over our friends and our loved ones who aren't here tonight. Be with them and guide, lead, and direct them as you guide, lead, and direct us. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Welcome everybody out on this cold, dreary, nasty night. And at least, I guess we can be thankful it's raining and not snowing.
Yeah.
So far. I don't think, last I looked, they don't think it's going to change over, so I'll go with that.
Okay.
All right, first item, pool of minutes.
Make a motion to approve your comments.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. Next item's the bills.
Move to pay all bills.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. We don't have any old business, but going down to new business, the first item is some funding for Nancy with planning and zoning. I know the first one is dealing with some training they have to do. And it's two of them at 250 each, but it splits with Hartford, so we need a motion to pay the $350 for the training with that, had the eight hours training for planning and zoning board members.
Make a motion to approve the money for that.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. And the next item, also from Nancy's on planning and zoning, the guy who's doing all the training used to work for the state, and he does a lot of work with ordinances and stuff now. And ours is in some desperate need of updating, I believe. And he's agreed to work with her on updating our ordinances with the business district, for business ones, two, and three, B1, 2, and 3, to get those a little more aligned with what they're supposed to be. And also with the signage ordinance, because there's been some changes on the state level on what can and can't be done, so to put ours in. But she's asking if we would approve up to 1,500 for Beverdame's portion of that.
I move to approve 1,500 for...
Up to 1,500, if you don't mind.
Up to 1,500 for planning zoning, for their updating of their ordinances.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. Next item is vehicle use policy.
Travis and Jill did work on this, so I'll turn it over to Travis if he wants to.
So basically, we just, if we change a few things, just kind of have a quarterly maintenance, add a few small policies to it, we can get a greater discount on our insurance. I've got the, me and Jill have got the insurance on our vehicle, all the way up to 12%, which is the most you can get through KLC. So the main points of the policy is we're going to have a points restriction policy.
Have a what?
A points restriction policy. So if one of our drivers loses points on our license, we can track that and we can enable their driving or disable their driving. We're going to do an annual defensive driver training. You probably noticed we're going back and in over its job. We're doing a pull forward first. KLC recommends it. They say the majority of vehicle accidents are from backing up parking lots. And that's about it. And that pretty much sums up the highlights of it.
This will be adopted into a personate policy.
And this can be done immediately. It doesn't have to go through two readings, does it?
Move to approve the update to the vehicle use and policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. I will say, did I understand you said 12% savings?
12% savings.
On vehicle insurance.
I know we only got three. I thought we went to six, but...
Well, we've got the vehicle up to a six. We've got the workers coming up to a six from a zero. It's going to be a pretty substantial savings. We'll know what we need with being Monday, so...
There's a lot of things that they're doing that, that's one of the good pluses about being insured through KLC, where they'll come in and...
It'll be a pretty substantial savings.
You know, do things like that to help you on your savings on your insurance. Okay, next item's new hire, Larry.
Yeah, I asked the commission, we have done some interviews the last couple of weeks, and I'd ask the commission if we hired Ryan Moore for the city. Right now, we're kind of uncertain which department he's going to go in. We're not sure if we're going to put him in sanitation or if we're going to keep him in water. It'll be a decision for Travis to make here in the near future. We're going to be short of one here for too long, so we thought we'd start training and everything, so...
I'm going to make the motion that we hire Ryan Moore.
Sir.
$12 an hour going to 1,250 after 90 days.
Okay.
$12 an hour going to 1,250 after 90 days.
Sir.
Could we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes. James, do you have anything?
No, not yet, just one.
Sandy.
I don't, no.
Charles?
Just one thing, David, do you have a copy of these people for everybody? Don't I have the only copy?
I do not, I just...
Okay, I'll give it to Jill when I get done, okay? But we need to have in our minutes that we, Beverdame Fire Department has elected new officers, and it's listed as Assistant Chiefs Charlie Shields, Captain David Wilson, and Captain also Jeffrey Jones, Lieutenant Chase Vance, and Lieutenant Paige Schmidt. And we had to have those approved in our minutes after we elected new officers. So I will, for, I will move we accept the new Fire Department officers.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say five, five. Post saying, motion passes.
Unless Mike has anything, I don't have anything else.
We'll get Tim.
We're going to wait next month during...
We'll get Tim in a minute. Kevin?
I voiced my thing with you this morning, and I have no problem. Everything's going good for your bring-ups.
For yet.
Right now. We're going to a closed session. Okay.
One thing I would just want to bring up, just to make everybody aware, we've already started working on it. Last year, during the General Assembly, the state did approve medical cannabis bill. And the Department of Health Services will be overseeing that, and they're going to start licensing facilities, both for grower and dispensaries, starting January 1, which will be 2025. So KLC's already started working on some sample ordinances to put together.
Now, do we amend those, or do we just use what they do?
Well, we can do anything we want to. They just have some samples put together that we can build off of, or accept, or reject all the way around. But there's a lot of things you can do, you know, as far as time, place, and manner of sale, and all that good kind of stuff. And I feel like it's something we need to watch and stay on top of and have it ready to go before January 1. So that's something we're going to be working on this spring and summer. And it'll probably take most of all spring and summer, you know, to get it wrapped up.
Is that going to take an officer, kind of like the other, Alisa with the alcohol sheet? It's going to take anybody like that?
Well, I think the state's doing a whole lot along the lines of the way alcohol was set up, where you can do...
So it'll be a little greedy for somebody.
Restrict places to sell, restrict times of sale, restrict dates of sale.
But isn't it, that's the only thing they can sell? They're not allowed to sell anything else but that? I thought that's the way Judge Johnson described it when he was talking to me about it.
Well, there's been several different things come up. The law's one thing, but when they promulgate the rules, it's something times a whole lot different, because the law's pretty vague.
Okay. Only thing that I have is, we have a small water leak on Goshen Road. After, since through the night, no traffic, there's a pretty good puddle of water.
Did we ever confirm if it's ours, is a leak in?
We still have not shown any chlorine in it. It's the only thing that's there, so...
So you're talking about the end of Goshen intersection?
So we've gotten a hold of electoral signs. They're going to have a crew come in, they're going to do a directional bore, and put a piece of casing in, then pull a six-inch water making back through. So we will have the water shut off for a few hours, whenever it's tied back in, so it's just kind of heads up.
Glad you're going to bore it, way we don't mess up the new road.
We was hoping that there was a piece of casing already there, but there's not. If it was, you know, we could pull it out, put one in.
Of course, they didn't dig, they didn't do any excavation up there, so it's nothing that we can...
It's not in our folder.
We can kind of say excavation caused problems.
That old section of pipe there, it's in six-foot joints, and there's two three-quarter inch bolts that has a flange that runs it up. And we've had leaks and been following for just tighten bolts up or replace it, but this year is not going to be that simple.
Well, we need to get it out of there anyway and put it in casing and be done with it. Okay, do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Travis, do you have anything? Jill? David? Mike?
Mr. Heinz, they're getting way along with their student.
We're still looking at March, about March 15?
Yeah, probably, about four more weeks after this week, I think.
We get two of them out at the same time?
They're doing good.
Yep, they're real good.
Now we get us fully staffed? Good deal. Okay. Angie, do you have anything?
No, I think I'll do it.
She's always watching.
Okay. Next.
Yeah, I will first, Jeffrey and Pro, my wife Deanna, and daughter Desiree Howard. We're currently in negotiation with buying an EB Hatchet's place here. What we would like to do, we would like to keep it here in Beverdame. I know the girl that owns it now said that she rents the building from the city of Beverdame. We would like to keep it here in Beverdame. We also know that this is the hub of entertainment for Ohio County. We'd like to, you know, be open during the Thursday night bike night, the Friday during Down One Seconds, the, you know, Strawberry Fest. We feel like there's an opportunity there that continue to provide entertainment for the residents of not only Beverdame, but, you know, the surrounding counties and stuff too. So we come to ask that you guys consider, you know, renewing the lease to us. I'm not for sure exactly when her lease is up. I think maybe she told us April, but she wasn't for sure. But we would like to continue to keep that business here in Beverdame. Once again, just coming and asking for you guys to consider that and...
We would love to keep you here in Beverdame, so...
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. We're really excited, you know, we have some different ideas. Nothing against her or anything like that. We know that she had some other, you know, adventures going on too, you know, and maybe wasn't as open as much during the foot traffic and the other activities going on in Beverdame. But we have some ideas, you know, to open up, maybe do some league, do some tournaments and things like that. Maybe go mobile, you know, later in the summer, you know, where we can, you know, venture out in some of the other areas that, you know, the entertainment's going on in Beverdame as well.
I'm so thrilled that someone is buying it. I've been trying to talk people...
I was excited, when Larry, Travis won't tell me about it, and tell me who it was, I was excited to hear that. I'm like, okay.
Well, you know, we're from, you know, Desiree lives here in Beverdame, you know, we used to live in Beverdame, we're Hartford residents, you know, and stuff, but we're Ohio County residents, you know, and we just want to venture or something, you know, and like I said, keep family entertainment here in the county.
Well, we appreciate it very much, and whatever we can do, Travis, can you all get together sometime, or Larry, take our current leases? What we did with the last bit, we just took the current lease and kind of worked with them. And when do you take ownership, or?
It's all depending after tonight. We're supposed to meet tomorrow to kind of finalize, you know, and negotiate. We've negotiated price, sell price, and things like that, but I wasn't going to buy if you guys wouldn't, you know, renew the license or renew the lease and stuff, because I don't want to buy the stuff and then...
Have no place to stand, right? I get that, no. Yeah, just, and if we have to have a special meeting, we can do that to get that approved.
Now, has she given you a list of what goes with it? Because the previous owner was trying to sell things in contract states that, you know, any approvals come to us. So I don't want you to get Buffalo thinking you're buying...
Yeah, no. Yeah, so we kind of did a walkthrough, you know, and, you know, we discussed what's staying, what's, you know, because she has some arcade equipment in there that actually belongs to someone else, you know, and they have an agreement there. But as far as, yeah, we understand that the building and everything, you know, that building-wise belongs to the city, you know, ax and, you know, targets and things like that, assault, and, you know, TV and equipment belongs to the business. So, yeah, we did a walkthrough and agreement on that. We haven't finalized it in writing or anything like that yet, but hoping to, like I say, to finalize tomorrow, if you're guys okay with us staying here in Beverdame.
Have you seen her lease?
I have not seen her lease, I'm sorry, her lease.
Okay, I didn't know if everything was satisfactory with it?
Yeah, well, no, I haven't seen it. I think she told me that she just renewed it from the previous owners. So I'm assuming that we will be fine.
So is it here, where we can see it? I mean, it's like...
It's over in, yeah.
Okay. We can check with the girls.
I would say get with Jill, or, I don't know, maybe at least, I don't know who's taking care of that, but one of them would have it for you, first thing in the morning, just to look at, you know.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll do, we'll come down tomorrow.
As far as I'm concerned, we're good with that. There may be a few changes that you all want to talk about, and that's fine, we can work that out, and we can approve that pretty quick.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Looking forward to it. And I will say too, I'll let Shelby know, our tourism, and I'm sure you've already talked to her, but, or, you know, I know you all know her, so anything we can do to help you from that aspect, we're happy to do it.
Great.
Do everything we can to make it go over in a big way, that's what we want.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate your time.
Okay. You all together, or?
No.
Okay.
I know a few of you. My name's Virginia, and I own several rental properties in Beverdame, and 319 West Ford is one I'm wanting to talk to you guys about. Couple of weeks ago, you guys voted on, I don't know what, how it came out, they put up a, is it Rander, Randy Rander and Big Pinky Brown? They put up a, you granted on 15 foot or something?
We dated them the 15-foot alley, yes.
Yeah, well, the alley goes in the middle of my property, in the middle of my driveway.
Well, your driveway was actually on our alley.
I have owned this property for 22 years. Does that matter?
Not really.
Well, it really doesn't. That one's been there since the 20s.
Whenever it was used as an alley, it's been used as my driveway, are you on, did you vote?
The alley went the depth of Ms. Brown's property?
No.
And then, yeah.
The pictures of the building?
We haven't seen a block of shows that built that far.
That we've kept up and maintained and put gravel on this entire for 20-plus years, sir?
Well, and where the whole problem started is when Easter morning in 2020, when Bill went out there and bulldozed all of her bank and all of her, the plants, perennials, flowers and stuff, they've been there since the '30s. Not only did he bulldoze stuff that's on the alley property, but he bulldozed, it was a backhoe.
He didn't use no bulldozer, he cut it back. And this was 10 years ago, when he done that.
No, no. I was there, I saw it. Easter morning, 2020.
2020?
Yep. 7:30 a.m., I got the call. And he took out about 30 feet of all kinds of stuff.
Look, you look at the pictures.
I saw it first time.
There's no 30 feet there.
I mean, down Ms. Brown's property line towards...
There's not, it wasn't 30 feet there. Did you see, did you even look at the pictures?
I know what was there, I saw it.
Right there's my driveway going up to this building that was there. Right here is where the, he cut them back there.
And it wasn't his to cut, it was hers.
It was up against my, we couldn't even see, we could not see to get to back out of the...
But did you talk to anybody about it before he trespass on somebody else's property?
First he cut, it wasn't her property to trespass on.
It was, it was, where he cut it all and dug it all up.
He dug up her surveyor's pen.
Yeah, that's an issue too. And that can be, is that a felony or misdemeanor?
Well, are you going to charge a dead man?
No.
I mean, my boss.
No, we're not going to charge anything. But Ms. Brown's been victimized over and over and over again.
He cut back bushes.
That meant something to her, and it was on her property.
They were over on...
No, the bushes, there were no bushes on your property at all. There were some on the alley, and some, and the rest was on her property.
I'm going to show a picture that I have here of, up against our driveway. That's all he cut back was back, this here is a ditch going along here, and this was up here.
I know exactly where he cut, because I saw it. I watched, after I got there, he was gone, but I saw exactly where all the dirt was at, where everything was dug up.
We couldn't even, we could not even back out of that driveway that were, it was up against us, and it was out in the street where we couldn't back up without getting blowed at, if we, if it was that close to us.
And there's ways to handle it, and without taking some of it upon yourself. But what's happened, we did approve to deed the alley space the city owned to Ms. Brown.
Why didn't anybody let me know, or that I could at least had some kind of say over?
I discussed it with Mike Filte when he was running over more property and destroying more property. I discussed it my way. Yes, and I screamed from my back door there to you, and I waited for you to come out after you picked up concrete locks and threw them on other planes. They weren't in the...
I'm sorry, ma'am, but this is all a whole face lie.
You said it was somebody else.
I'm sorry to have showed up here.
Okay, okay, now, whoa, whoa.
It may have been my great nephew that's living in there. I've asked him to tear the building down, and so we can build another building there. And he cleaned up around that.
Well, the issue right now is, the city did vote to deed the alley, we've deeded the alley to Ms. Brown. My suggestion, if you disagree with this, to have your property surveyed and see if the points match up with what the surveyor's showing now. If it is, it's kind of a moot point. If it's not, then that's an issue that'll go to the courts. There's nothing the city can do about that part of it.
Can I say something? Let me say something. I'm listening to this, and if I understand it, this is the alley, this is the same type alley we've been dealing with down here for a long time. It, that property was never dedicated, and that's what the deed to Ms. Brown says, it was never deeded to the city, it was never dedicated to the city, which means that that 15-foot never belonged to the city. So when we gave a quick claim deed, it says in there that the city, in effect, doesn't claim this as city property. It's just like all these other alleys that were subdivided before there was any planning and zoning. So effectively, if you really want to know who owns the property, the original subdivision that divided it in the '40s and '50s and early '60s are the actual owners of the property. The problem is that plat was filed of record in the county clerk's office. So everybody goes over and looks at that plat, although those alleys were never actually used for public right-of-way purposes, ever. Never, and gravel on them, never had, they were never paved or anything else. So this has been an ongoing problem for the city, because people, just like you good folks, come down here wanting the city to answer the question on a piece of property that the city has never claimed ownership of. But y'all want the city to give the resolution of it. The problem is, the city cannot give resolution of it. This Mrs. Brown came down here, and what we've done before on some occasions, where we could get it done, is if all the adjoining property owners would agree that so-and-so actually has been maintaining that property, and it's perfectly fine for that individual to actually continue to take care of the property, the city gives the deed a quick claim, such as it is, and understand the deed that's given to Ms. Brown means this. If the city owns it, you get it. The city doesn't own it, the city's not warranting anything. The deed to her says with no warranty. So the city's not warranting anything with that deed. Mrs., you came to see me, and you explained, what she explained to me was that they had been maintaining at least some part of this property for 20-some years, and there was an old building on the back of the property that somebody constructed, and that building apparently sits right on the right-of-way. Is that...
A few feet of it did.
Are we in agreement with that? Okay. Well, here's the news about that building. If that, that building, when it was built, and nobody, nobody objected to it being built, at that point in time, that building technically belonged to whoever put that building up. It's called equitable stopple. Adjoining property owners cannot let somebody come onto their property and build a building that sits there for years. That property belongs to whoever put that building up, or whoever they subsequently deeded it to. The issue that the city's locked into is kind of unfortunate, because all the city's ever tried to do is to help people deal with these little, these little alleys that it would take a fortune to clear up. The only way to clear it up, y'all need to listen to this, the only way to clear the title of this property up is, if you're claiming you own it by what's called adverse possession, which means that the property is transferred when somebody takes control of a piece of property, open, notorious, and adverse to everybody else, and you occupy it, you build a road on it, you do whatever you have to, and you're controlling it for over 15 years, technically, that property could become your property if you do what's necessary. And the only way to clear this dispute up, the city can't clear it up for you, you're in the wrong place. The only way to get this cleared up is either for Mrs. Brown with that quick claim deed, and whatever she claims, to go to circuit court and ask the circuit court to quiet title in her favor. Or if you claim to own it, which you do, you have to go to circuit court and file a quiet title action, and the court, after hearing all the evidence, and being horribly frustrated, I've been in these, Judge Coleman ain't going to be a happy camper to try to deal with this. But that's where the authority is, to quiet title and determine who in fact owns the property, including, I guess, if the city, if the city wanted to make a claim to it, or any of the adjoining property owners who claim to own it by adverse possession. Cannot be cleared up down here. This is not the place for it, and if we didn't already know it, how many, how many times we had people down here on this kind of issue, Larry?
We've had a bunch, we had a bunch of them.
If we, you know, for a second. Go break me a second there. But this city, if the city had one, this, this one probably, somebody else came down and said, it's not our issue yet, and we're just trying to help somebody resolve.
We don't even own them anyway.
No, well, we don't own them, that's the problem.
Even the ones we do own, we don't own.
No, we never did, actually, own them. But, I mean, the factual argument Mayor was getting down here now, we're not positioned to resolve it.
They gave something away that wasn't theirs.
Well, we didn't give anything away, because it wasn't ours to begin with.
That's right, that's what I said.
We just, we gave away anything that we might...
That is correct, which is what we've done before.
I know, sir, this, this gentleman, thank you, sir. I will say that my grandfather took care of that alley, and when there were trees up that alley, he paid to have the trees trimmed. My grandmother wasn't happy with that, but he determined that whether he paid for it personally, or the city paid for it out of tax, it was the same thing. When they bought the property in the '30s, it was used for utility... When they bought the property in the 30s, it was used for utilities. And as I grew up, my family took care of the alley, straight cleared up past utility home. We've always maintained it. No one else has helped maintain it. No one's lived in that house the last dozen years or so till October, when y'all started working on it this year. We're the only ones that's been taking care of it. Nothing has been in anyone's way. Irises don't get that high. Neither do daisies or daffodils.
I don't care for you to have the ditch. You've already got a fence there. One of those pictures show they've already got a fence. They're wanting to go over on my, there's a ditch in between us and their fence, but they're wanting to go over in, in my driveway.
The driveway is all we want and we've mowed and maintained that ever since we've owned the property.
I mean, I'm not saying nothing, nothing about the ditch, they...
Whether anyone was living there or not, we've, we've mowed that yard and...
Did you see the fence? I took, showed you a picture of the fence? They're just, they've got a fence, then there's a ditch, and then there's my driveway. So, why, why don't you put, you can put a fence there, right there in the ditch. Don't put it in the middle of my driveway.
Yeah, up the bank, at the top of the bank is fine. We just want that driveway. You can have, you can have...
There's a ditch and a bank there, but you've already got a fence.
You know that there had always been a fence there and nobody, when they did show up, nobody said a word. We didn't care. When you took out our, our apartment, every year, right there's their fence.
Yeah, you see it? There's their fence. They're wanting to put it up here on my, in my driveway. Put your, go on, expand your fence.
That fence most likely is not on the property line.
Then they can expand it to that if they want. Why do they want to move on up in my driveway?
But it all started when all this stuff was dug up.
That's nothing to do with me.
Well, it's to do with the property and the property owners. But anyway, we kind of, yes, sir?
Look, they've already got a fence. There's a whole ditch. Why do they want to come up here in my driveway? I'm sorry.
I'm an old man, an old, let me tell you a story real quick. I've got, somebody comes into my office, this happened out of apples. They were in an argument over about 15 feet, run, that sound familiar, 15 feet that ran between their property. And this gentleman insisted that, no, no, it's my property. Turned out it was. But, but, but I told him when he came in, I said, I'm not going to call his name, you really don't want to get involved in this? And he said, why not? I said, look, because of what it's going to cost to finally get this matter resolved, you, you really would be better off if I knocked out the window of my office here and you just threw the cash out the door, out the window, because, because what it's going to cost. And what I'm telling you, the only way to resolve this, you're going to have to get a survey. You're going to have to file a lawsuit. If y'all can't reach an agreement on it, you're going to have to file a lawsuit in circuit court. You're each going to have to have a lawyer because you can't, you can't put this proof on it away. The last one of these I handled took three days for the court to be able to resolve it. You're dealing with 15 feet that goes the length of two lots and the cost, if you can't come to some understanding between yourselves of going to court, which is the only way to get this resolved, this is not a court. It was never intended to try to resolve this issue. And the only way you're going to get it resolved is put your proof on, bring your surveyor in, pay him, each one of you have a different surveyor perhaps. The, the cost of this thing, considering what ground is actually involved, and I know the ground's really important to both of you, I get it, I understand that. But, but you either reach an agreement on it or the cost of getting it resolved, if you can't, is, is way, way more than the value of what that footage is. And that's the only way to resolve it. Been there, done that.
Robbie?
Just trying to learn how these places work.
Welcome. All right, entertaining motion to go with the closed session.
We're going closed session.
She had three pictures, I'm surprised because I thought she was on track. Make a motion, then we go back into open session.
Second.
Motion second, we go back into open session. We did discuss several things, no business was conducted, as is the rule with an open session, closed session? Who wants to make this motion?
Can I read your writing?
I hope so.
Okay. I want to make a motion to authorize $5,000 for payment for resolution of condemnation of...
Beaver Down.
Beaver Down versus Elvis Dewey.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I was getting ready, so do you have a motion?
Have a motion, motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, 10, 5, 10? Post saying, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else to bring up?
It's not that everybody's gone.
They should have scared, wouldn't wear any of all the gloves.
It better not be a bad an alley.
It is!
I know, I know, I know.
Can I call, I should have blocked mine off since y'all don't own it.
Where is your alley? I remember you...
It's right there. Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, the one that...
This is right, yeah. What do I need to do now?
That alley cannot be totally closed because you've got residents using it off of Madison.
That's their driveway.
That is their driveway. And I don't know how far she comes down.
My, the two lots, the grass is, yeah.
You own two lots on this side of the alley?
The alley runs up between the lots.
Good, good.
You own a lot on Fourth Street and Third Street?
Yeah.
Do you know the city owns a section of a lot over there on the corner of...
Right on the corner of Fourth and Broad.
Fourth and Broad?
The bank's there.
Huh?
That's what the bank said.
So, what's on the...
For PBA.
Yeah?
For PBA also shows that Leo owns her other lot.
Yeah.
And that's inaccurate.
But that's not right.
Who owns it? Leah.
Leo. He bought the house beside the lot.
Los Amigos.
The lines are showing it goes over Barlow, which...
Well, now, those lines aren't...
You can't go by those lines, so, yeah.
But it does show a section of ground there is owned by the city.
Yeah, pretty good size.
I'd like to see a deed on that. I'd like to see a deed on that.
Checking.
I'm digging up.
So, if she's wanting...
I mean, you, the city, if they want to buy it, put a partner on there. $2.
$1.50.
I'll go $5.
I'm trying to bet you out. If you're wanting the city to give you the alley, we're wanting you to give us the ground.
I, I'm, I'm already dressing up like a fever, come on now.
And they wanted me to give them that corner up on 62 and 231 for years and I haven't given them yet either, so...
We may just take it.
Yeah, y'all go ahead, just condemn it, just get rid of it.
I want you to kick a leg there, is what I want.
I don't have a population without.
I know.
No, I didn't know if I could go ahead, just, yeah.
Can we block it?
So, how would that affect the English, make them pull in their driveway, but we wouldn't be able to go all the way through?
No, I'm talking about on the other end.
Oh, other end, okay.
The other end is still the other.
I'm going to go back to what E.B. said, how can we block it if we don't own it?
Well, we can block it till somebody takes us to court to stop it.
You're going to block it.
I couldn't move my building.
Don't be doing that. We need, we need a storage building, go ahead.
She's got a...
It's another one of those alleys, yeah?
Same location, same foundation. Right across the street.
It's right across the street. No, this one's between...
This one's here.
Madison and Broad, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's, it's between, it's between Third, Second, Third.
The other one was between Fourth and what would've been, should've been Fifth.
It's in the same vicinity.
Yeah, but it's still, they go different directions.
Well, if you block one end of it, it stops toward Three Grand.
I've got, I've got two lots over here and the alley goes in between my two lots.
And there's nothing on the lots, is there?
No, it's just all...
They get lost.
Yeah.
But it's got alley, according to the plat, going right there.
We can't, we can't just...
She owns on both sides of it?
She owns both lots. The, the thing goes right in between her property.
Could Clayton get in, block one end?
She wants to know she can block off that one end so people can drive in there.
That's what I'm talking about, blocking the one on...
Block the opposite end.
Broad.
How, were you planning on blocking it or do you have a plan?
If she chooses to block it, she chooses to block it.
So, she can...
I was just going to put some blocks up or something, just...
Railroad ties or something like that.
Yeah, that'd work.
We can't say what you can do with it.
That, that was, that was my question.
How far does it go back? Because I know there's the White House here.
Yeah.
Right there with that front porch.
There's a, where that White House is, where Matt, the house Matt's at, ditch there, it goes to the ditch, approximately, and then the tree, the big tree on the other end, it goes right in there somewhere.
Angie, nobody's, nobody's going to use that alley if you block a fat end, but just leave the other one open so the guy can... It's your property, do what you want to do.
I've driven, I've driven through it before. I've driven through it before when I took poor lane home because Lord have mercy, I came back out of their driveway. I'll just stop in the road, that'll probably get me a ride.